Okay. Thank you. I'd like to call the Human Resources Committee together to order. It is Wednesday, July 19. It is 5:35 and we are at the Nashua High North Boardroom. Does somebody have a calendar to take roll call? Okay. Thank you. Dr. Murataki?
I'm here.
Here. Mrs. Ziem, she's not able to make it tonight. Ms. Ohensy?
Here.
Mrs. Oden, I'm here. Okay. Is there a need to go into non-public session for anything pertaining to the HR committee? There is. And what would we go under? What RSA? Is it the?
A32B, hiring of any person as a public employee.
Okay. The RSA 91, A32B, the hiring of any person as a public employee. Is there any other reason to go in? I was speaking to Attorney Bolton and he said there's no need to come in and out if you're going under different RSAs. As long as you state all of them before you go in, you can just go into one non-public session. So if there's any other issue? No? Okay. Good. Roll call.
Mrs. Ziem, she's absent. Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Dr. Murataki?
Yes.
Mrs. Ohensy says yes.
Okay. It is 5:36. I'm looking for a motion to seal the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Dr. Murataki?
Yes.
Mrs. Ohensy, yes. We've come out.
Miss Ohensy. Okay. It is about 58.
Okay. Thank you. So I'd like to make a motion to discuss the reimbursement of travel expenses for Dr. Mosley. I don't know what discussion there is, but.
Do you want to move to approve?
Okay. Move to approve the mileage, the mileage vouchers that were submitted in our package for 10 days helping at our district. I think the total sum is $785.49. I'm very appreciative that he was willing to come those 10 days and I think this is, that's a good move for the board to take.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm looking for a motion to approve the personnel recommendations revised for tonight's meeting.
For July 19, 2017, revised.
Uh huh.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Some of these at the end of the, at the conclusion of the 2016-17 school year, does that imply the end of summer school, like they might be here now? Like I'm looking at number four and that particular person at the conclusion of the 2016 school year. So if it's the normal academic year, we're beyond that. So are they somebody who might be teaching during the summer and then are resigning effective? I just want to understand what that means.
And it could be people who for some reason during the summer have come up with another job, maybe a spouse is being moved or whatever, and you go back to your last contract date of when that ended. So this is normal.
Okay. So it's a retroactive resident, in other words, the school year ended the end of June. So this is.
My understanding. Dana?
So the board sees personnel recommendations for teaching positions. So it's possible that there may be somebody on this list who's actually on summer school, but that doesn't go, the hiring and the resigning for summer school doesn't go through the board. So what you see is for their educator positions during the school year.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Murataki?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to note that item 15 is the retirement of the Nashua High North Principal Marion Bastide effective July 28, 2017. So have we begun the recruiting or interview process for a replacement?
The position has been posted and we are already underway in our recruitment efforts. We are reaching out to, it should be already beyond Ed Jobs. The New Hampshire School Administrator Association is distributing the posting to all the New Hampshire schools. We are reaching out to Massachusetts, Rhode Island, and Maine to their school, secondary school principal organizations as well. We've targeted the colleges in the New England area who have leadership programs to post those positions there as well.
Okay. What's the likelihood we can actually have a person in position by the time the fall
It's hard to say. I actually already have one candidate that's already contacted us, but it depends on the pool of candidates.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Ms. Van Twyler?
Thank you, Mrs. Oden. I have two questions. On the interview sheets, on the sheets that we get for candidates you're bringing forward, under the interviews, the people that are interviewing this, is this the first round of interviews? Are those the people that did the first round?
I think the, they, maybe Dr. McKinney can speak more to this, but I'm pretty sure they only have, they have multiple positions open in the school and so they usually go through one round, but they may have several. So in an elementary school, they could have several grade levels opens. So they're forming interview teams for each.
I just want to know about the people that are doing the interview. I mean, I don't see any board members here listed.
The board is not. The board policy is for assistant principal and higher.
Oh, correct. I'm sorry about that. Forgot. The other question I had was about the positions, the administrative positions that we still have open.
We have the Title I Director that is still opening. We are interviewing on Friday for that position. We have the three assistant principal positions that are open at Broad Street Elementary, Bicentennial Elementary, and Sunset Heights. And we also have now Nashua High North Principal position open.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Ohensy?
Oh, don't we also have? Okay. That's right. I had a question. I would like to attend the interviews for the principals that we have, specifically the North. I was looking at the policy and I wrote to Attorney Bolton for clarification, but there's, and I'll pass out, I only brought a few copies. There's one section in DEB, section five, and it says, "Prior to a vote to recommend a candidate, a member of the committee," this is HR because the topic is HR, "shall be given the opportunity to interview all candidates for the positions of Director and above as well as Principal and Assistant Principal." So if we're allowed to interview all candidates on the committee, would that not be allowed? That we could just attend, maybe not participate? But I think that it's important to get to know some of these candidates and to get involved in the process because there's turnover in the board. If we lose some of the more experienced people, myself being a newbie, I would like to have a little bit more experience going forward. Also, I, you know, I just think it's important to make sure that the process is open and fair and I think the best way to do that is to be involved in it.
Mr. Halliwell?
Was there enough papers to go around or did I?
I brought four copies. There's four members at the committee.
So can you tell me what you were looking for? What was it that you got from Bolton that he said?
I sent him an email. I have not gotten a response because the next sentence is very clear that the HR Chair or Designee shall be invited to participate in all rounds of the candidates for these positions. But the first sentence says that every member of the committee shall be given an opportunity to interview all candidates. All candidates would be more than the one nominated finalists that we generally see on the committee. So I was just hoping, for the case of principals, that I could be involved.
Mr. Halliwell, then Mr. Farrington.
And I'll preface this by saying, I think I was against the language that's written The intent was to try, there was a group of people on the board that were against a board member attending all of these sessions and I think primarily it's just, it changes the dynamic in the room, would be my view. But I think the two sentences go together. I think, because Mrs. Oden, correct me if I'm wrong, you have attended early sessions of these kinds of things, right?
Yes, I have.
So I think the intention was that a member of the committee, the HR committee, could attend and that would typically be up to the Human Resources Committee Chair, which would be Mrs. Ziem, right, is not, to decide who that representative is. And so I think Mrs. Oden was chosen as the representative of the HR committee and that's why she attends those, but I'm not sure whether that's how it happened. So the intention is for there to be the possibility of one member attending those, but that it would be selected by the HR Committee Chair.
Mr. Farrington, then Mr. Kaufman, and then I'll speak.
Yeah, I don't want to belabor, but you know, I've said this before. My view, and I think it's spelled out in this Human Resources Committee charge, is that the board is involved, actively involved in the hiring of superintendent. Beyond that, the hiring of assistant superintendents and principals and teachers and everything else, that's the superintendent's job. This gives, this policy gives the chair or their designee an opportunity to be, participate in a little bit and be involved in it and it gives us a little bit of board representation that was wanted when this policy was changed. Beyond that, I'm opposed to having more and more board members involved in it. I think that, again, our charge is to employ, hire a superintendent and then we hold that person accountable for hiring the proper people. Pretty simple.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thanks. I think if we step back on this just a little bit and just look at the makeup of the current HR Committee, and I think where Ms. Ohensy's comment touched on was we now, well, we know at least Mrs. Oden has announced she's not running for reelection, at least as far as I know, that's still the case. I don't know what Mrs. Ziem's plans are, but Ms. Ohensy and Dr. Murataki is also up for reelection. So three of the four current members of the HR Committee are up for reelection this year. They may or may not run again or either be reelected. Ms. Ohensy will be on the board next year. So I think in that regard, some on-the-job training is useful to the board and useful to the district as a whole, to the board in itself, to, for one of our, you said newbie, I think, to be involved so that they can become more acquainted with the process. Because right now, especially over the last few months, the process has been largely Mrs. Ziem and Mrs. Oden. So that, I think, is beneficial to the board over the long haul, that we can actually have someone who will be here next year, perhaps on the committee, being more attuned to how the committee is operated.
Mr. Halliwell?
And that may be a valid argument to present to Mrs. Ziem as the Chair of the HR Committee. She, from this, from my interpretation of what this meant and what I think the intent was, was that the Chair of the HR Committee would decide who that representative was.
As someone who brought this forward to the HR Committee, and going back from my experience from the board previously, when three members, the HR Committee, could be on interview teams and that had been eliminated, that was no longer the policy, and the coming out of the HR Committee, I believe it was Mr. Halliwell, Mr. Haas, and myself, there was a compromise that the Chair of the Committee, one member from the HR Committee, would be on the interview team, be part of the interviews, and if the Chair could not make it, they could appoint somebody else. And that, A, is a member, it maybe should have been one member, but I agree with you. That was the intent of the policy. And I don't know if you approved it or not, but it had to have two votes coming out of the HR Committee.
Perhaps I did in the end. I don't think I supported the notion. I guess what I'm trying to say is I was sort of on the other side of this. I didn't, so you're right. This may have been language that I came up with as a compromise because I think the intention was, at some point, was anybody who wanted to show up at a interview could. I thought that was a little too liberal, so.
No, it wasn't that. It was, it was from anybody from the HR Committee. It wasn't just from the board. It was only the HR Committee.
Well, I guess I would say there were some initial discussions about what the people wanted, that wanted this language in, and it wasn't just, I mean, Mrs. Ziem was active in that discussion as well. So there was a desire to have more people be able to attend those whenever they wanted to. That's what I recall.
Your memory is better than mine. Thank you.
Mrs. Oden? I'd just like to, I would just say that the board should seriously think about this because if we do have turnover, that leaves us in a very awkward position where you're not mentoring the new people. The other thing is, what is the point of being on this committee? Among other committees where you actually do some work, most of our work is looking at this typed-up list of names of resignations and nominations, all of which we haven't met. So I just think if a board, if a committee member is willing to put in the time to try to get to know more members of the district or potential members of the district, it should be welcomed by this board because right now, there's not much we do, other than rubber stamp the list that we get and it's not very good system.
Dr., I'm sorry. Are you finished?
Yeah, I'm done.
I'm sorry. Dr. Murataki?
Yes, thank you very much. I have some memory on this topic as well and I could basically deliberate, but I'm not going to. Mrs. Ziem is not present today and it would probably be more appropriate to have this discussion when she is here.
Could I just clarify? Having been on this committee for a while, the people on the committee do not meet these people. I happen to know a couple of them. One of them was a student teacher under me. Maybe I've taught with another one. But on this committee, you do not meet the teachers, you do not see them. The names are just names at this point in their position. So this isn't a situation where you're interviewing people, you're just approving it. You're looking to see how many people applied for the job, who interviewed them, and what their salary is going to be or their GPA. You look at that, their qualifications. So this isn't a position where you would be meeting these people one-on-one, not like the directors and assistant superintendents and superintendents. Mr. Halliwell?
Well, I could just say, I mean, I think I was Chair of the HR Committee at some point, or I was at least on it. And we certainly did a lot of things, different things in that committee. We looked at the job descriptions, which I know this committee has done. I think we dug down into like, what were the rationales for why people were leaving the district? What kind of people were we leaving? Who could we try to recruit better? Should we, what kind of advertising we should do, right? Because it was expensive to go into newspapers. We changed that and tried to do more stuff online. So I think it's a matter of your imagination as to what you can do on the HR Committee. I agree that the putting forth of the names for resignations and nominations, it is really just a formality because it's required by the state that we do it. But I don't think you'll find any HR Committee in the state of New Hampshire that digs down and interviews everybody that gets hired as a teacher. So that, I mean, that's not, that's just not the job of being on a HR Committee. But there's plenty of other things that can be done.
Ms. Van Twyler?
I was just going to say, didn't you just update a handbook for employees? Wasn't it the non-affiliated?
Yes, it was.
And I think they did one for the principals at one time too, didn't they? Or maybe not.
No, I don't remember that. But thank you. Mr. Farrington?
Yeah, I think this in part is, it would be a great segue if it was a different night, but get into our conversations about the characteristics of an effective board and governance and all that. Excuse me, but if you look at the charge of the committee, the committee shall review and monitor the competitiveness of employee salaries and benefits. You did that with the non-affiliated. In coordination with the superintendent, support programs of professional development to enhance opportunities for future promotions. Review professional development process for non-certified staff. Ensure the district maintains a fair and comprehensive hiring process. I think there's lots of things that the committee can do in that kind of an oversight role, but I think, again, the hiring, the interviewing and hiring and selecting who's going to hold these jobs, it falls to the person in this seat right here. And if we don't like, if it, if it turns out that they hire people who are not coming to work and when they do come to work, they're taking home desks and chairs and all that, we bring the superintendent in and talk about it. I don't think they're going to be doing that, by the way, tomorrow.
Ms. Ohensy?
Thank you. I don't see the need to see all of the rounds of interviews for all of the Director and above, but in this case, a principal of a high school, I think, is a very important position in our district. The other issue that I didn't want to bring up, but I will, since there's opposition to it, in order to make an open process, we need more eyes on the process. There were problems with the superintendent search, as witnessed in the paper today, where you had, you know, a member on there who is already biased and on that committee. I received a phone call from a teacher saying that there was a rumor at North who the designated person would be for this position. I've heard other board members talk about that type of hiring process before. As a committee member, I don't get to do anything except see the nominee, but I get concerned when I hear things that the process isn't open and fair. I know the new administration has nothing to do with the past and I'm not in any way trying to blame them. But I never got a call about this before. I got a call this week. I am trying to make sure that the process is open and fair. That's why I ask. So if this board would like to make sure that I don't do that, that is the will of the board and I will have to respect that. But that is my concern and I don't see the harm in being a wallflower in a room and listening to interviews if I want to spend extra time to ensure a process is open and fair. That's all. And I'm done.
I would just like to say, my experience so far, Dr. Mosley has been as inclusive as I've seen. He has developed a very successful process for hiring and I want to thank you for that. I think people appreciate it. I have heard lots of people say, "This was, this was a good process." So if you want to explain it, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I can talk in generalities around the process. And just to dispel any type of rumors or anything like that, we receive many, many calls, many, many questions around any openings district-wide. We do not have a, first of all, I don't, and I can say this because I'm not from Nashua, we don't, I don't know anyone connected to the job or anything like that. I don't know relatives that I know of or anything like that. So the process we use for the Bicentennial Principalship and the Sunset Heights Principalship that was open, when it was posted, we are, we ask faculty members from that school to volunteer their time. We generate interview questions that are coming from different facets of the building. So for instance, one will be from curriculum, another one will be from leadership, another one will be from community involvement. We invite parents to be part of that process as well and we formulate an interview committee for the Principalship. Prior to the interviews, we go over all of the questions as a team to make sure that we know who is asking what questions of the candidates. The other thing we review is that we want to make sure that we don't ask candidates questions that are against the law. So you, you know, for instance, you can't ask about, you know, sexual orientation, race, religion, all those things that are listed under the civil rights pieces. When we ask for the first round of the candidate, for the first round of interviews, what we do is, it's a very sterile process. We ask the questions directly without any follow-up questions whatsoever. All of our candidates are ranked on a Likert scale. And the candidates for the first round that had the highest number of, had the highest accumulation of cumulative score, we invite back for finalist. So at the end of the first round, we sit as a committee, we discuss the candidates, we talk about the rankings, and usually, in this case for the Bicentennial, for the Sunset Heights, everyone in the room was pretty, had a pretty good consensus of our top for the Bicentennial and for our principals, our top candidates. And then for the second round, what we do is that we note follow-up questions that we want to ask the candidates. We look at their resumes, we look at some of the questions and responses that they asked during the interview process and the responses, and then we ask them follow-up questions as well. Again, we discuss the candidates, we discuss, it's not necessarily about the job, it's about the right fit for the school. And that's very important because you may have candidates out there that have, using example, no experience for Title I, but have great experiences as a principal, but not in Title I schools. That doesn't necessarily mean that that's the right candidate for some of our schools out there. So first of all, I just want to say that we welcome people asking questions. We want people to say, "Hmm, we're pretty interested in coming to Nashua." That's actually what we want. We answer the questions, they go through Dana O'Gara. We tell all the candidates to go through one person. We don't want candidates contacting random people and getting inaccurate information as well. We have people who are very interested in this process. I know this is a public meeting. We want candidates to come to Nashua. We want you to apply. And so we're very excited about this. This process is unbiased in a way that we have a process in place where everyone will be judged and evaluated based on their credentials and what they bring to the Principalship.
Ms. Ohensy?
Thank you. I just want to thank Dr. Mosley for explaining that. I hope that allays some of the fears that were relayed to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to, oh, we need to suspend the minutes to introduce the person, the HR meeting from early this evening?
No, we're still in HR.
Oh, you're still in HR.
Still in HR. We have a, we have the personnel recommendations.
That's why you're running the meeting.
Sorry. Thank you.
We want to approve the recommendations.
We're looking for a motion to approve the personnel recommendations.
Dr. Murataki made the motion and I second it, so it's on the table.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I want to take this time to thank Assistant Superintendent McKinney and Assistant Superintendent Fritzpatrick. Originally, we had five, five people nominated for positions. We have an additional nine because of their efforts. And this is really important. It's getting close to the school year. People are looking at other positions if we don't move. So I want to thank them and Dr. Mosley for getting, and Ms. O'Gara for getting these to us. So thank you very much. It is appreciated and I know these people must appreciate it a lot too. So thank you very much. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.